It is Wednesday, November 12th at 6:00 PM. I'd like to call to order the Kaiser Planning Commission. We had, we get to do something cool tonight, which is the swearing in of two returning Planning Commissioners and a new Planning Commissioner. And then we're going to welcome our Youth Liaison, just because I'm going to add that for now, because I can. So without further ado, I'd like to invite Commissioner Grantz and soon-to-be Commissioner, Dr. Larry Scruggs, and myself up to the front, and we will be sworn in by City Attorney Lindsay.
I don't know if these are unchecked. We can hear you guys a little bit here. I guess we're going to get three for one tonight. So could everybody raise your right hand and repeat after me? I state your name.
Larry Scruggs.
Okay. Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the State of Oregon.
Of the State of Oregon.
The laws and ordinances.
The laws and ordinances.
Of the City of Kaiser.
Of the City of Kaiser.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of this office.
Of this office.
To which I have been appointed.
To which I have been appointed.
In and for the City of Kaiser.
In and for the City of Kaiser.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Okay, that's it. Thank you. Congratulations, guys. So I have Mr. Lawyer. Here's Mr. Prince. And Mr. Scruggs.
You on blue?
Yeah, it does not matter. And I will make three copies of these and get them over to you later. Thank you very much. Thank you, both of you. Thank you.
I think one of the cool things about being Planning Commissioners, one of, other than the City Council, it's the only office where we actually have to take an oath. And I think that the City Attorney, you have to take one, I'm sure, right? But it's pretty cool. Commissioner Grantz, we're the first to break the rules. It's awesome. I mean, we have, we have new rules that allow us to do more time than before, but we're the, we're the first of that batch. It's pretty cool. Been a long, been a long road. Shane just went, oh, no. Three more years. All right. Welcome.
Thank you.
So I'm just going to take, take a moment and ask, of all the wonderful things you could have done with your volunteer time, why did you decide to, to come hang out with us as Planning Commissioner?
In a previous employment, which lasted 21 years, one of my responsibilities was planning for the University of Portland. The biggest thing was developing Campus Facilities Master Plan. I'm an absolute believer in planning for your future. I don't want us to look like Houston. And I've got some available time, and this position opened up, and it seemed like a reasonable thing to do, and here I am.
Well, we're glad to have you. I don't know that we've ever been called reasonable, but that's, that's great that you found this body of work to be reasonable and look forward to hearing your ideas and thoughts. And we're blessed because we have the best possible team helping keep us out of the trouble as possible.
Well, I have worked with Shane on earlier things. And by the way, I do retain the right to change my opinion about reasonable.
Noted for the record. That's great. Well, welcome. Anybody, any questions or comments for our new Commissioner Scruggs?
Ladies and sir, I haven't shaken your hands yet. I haven't gotten down to that end of the table, but I look forward to working with everybody on this commission. I've been to a few of your meetings over the years. Really appreciate the work that you do and very happy to be a part of it.
Well.
Thank you.
Hopefully, that opinion still remains after a couple of years. Don, I'm just noting for the record, I don't see Frank on there yet.
I don't either. I thought I'd give it just a few more minutes.
And then, what's really exciting is, I understand, is it Toya?
Uh, Taliyah.
Taliyah. Well, I'm sorry, Taliyah.
That's okay.
Taliyah. Welcome. You are the Planning Commission Youth Liaison. If you're willing, would you tell us where you go to school and why you thought Planning Commission would be a great place to spend some time that you could otherwise be doing fun things?
Um, well, so I go to McNary High School, and I saw like a post about like joining the like City Hall committees as an youth liaison. And I don't know, I just think it's important to give back, and I think it's really cool to be involved in something like this, like something important, and I enjoy like doing that kind of thing.
Are you a junior or a senior or sophomore?
I'm a senior.
You're a senior, okay. So this is also really helpful for college applications, too. Hey, nothing wrong, no shame in the game, right? Well, welcome, and I just want to say, I think this is only the second time we've had a Youth Liaison on the Planning Commission since I've been here. It's an opportunity to learn a lot, probably way more about how the background and infrastructure in the City of Kaiser works than you'll ever want to know. But it'll start to kind of connect the dots as you're seeing things happen through the city. And so just good on you for taking the time to be willing to do this. Says a lot about your character and, you know, I would encourage you to reach out to either Councilor Duran or any of the Commissioners here, anybody on staff. If you've got questions, these are your experts, frankly, and they're going to be able to tell you all the things you could possibly know. If you want to understand a little bit about rural planning, you can talk to Commissioner King, she did some of that for a while. If you want to know about building, talk to either Councilor Duran or Commissioner Grantz. But yeah, we're glad to have you here.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to, let's see, any other comments on our, Mr. Brown?
I would just add, Taliyah is a very accomplished flute player. I believe All-State last year, right? Or you were All-State last year?
Uh, yes.
Yeah. So my oldest daughter was a friend of her in her senior year and Taliyah's freshman year. And now my youngest daughter is a freshman in, on the drum line. Janie and Courtney Brown.
Oh, Courtney, yes, I remember Courtney.
So I already know that Taliyah is way smarter than I'll ever be. I tried to do musical stuff and it didn't work out. Being both-handed doesn't, doesn't, it's not, it's not a thing, right? Here, get the, get the, get the guitar and it doesn't work, so good on you.
Thank you.
I, I was the only kid that was never allowed to play a recorder, and those are the worst sounding things ever. Okay? I got the, I got the, the bells, the, yeah. Anyways, all right, so our next item of business is the election of Chair and Vice-Chair. Let's open up the floor for nominations for either one or both positions, please. Mr. Grantz, Commissioner Grantz.
I nominate Mr. Lawyer for Chair.
I second.
Is there any other nominations for Chair? Okay, we'll close.
The nominations be closed?
Okay. I will move that we put up Commissioner Grantz as Vice-Chair. Turnabout's fair play, sir.
I'll second that.
All right. Since we don't do this actually by a formal vote, we get consensus is fine. Okay, is there any other nominations for Chair or Vice-Chair? Wait, Frank's gone. No, that's, that's not fair. All right. Okay, hearing none, I guess we will maintain the status quo. I'll stay on as Chair and Commissioner Grantz will be Vice-Chair. Any objections? All right, thank you.
Thank you all.
Okay, next item would be consideration of the September 2025 minutes. Is there a motion on the table for the September 2025 minutes, please?
I move that we approve the minutes as presented.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Grantz and a second by Commissioner Witters to approve as presented. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Any abstentions?
Well, I'll stay because I wasn't here when that was on the, well, I was here, but I wasn't on the board.
Fair enough. So one abstention, Commissioner Scruggs. Let's see. So we have one person signed up for Appearance of Interested Persons. Ms. Penwell, would you please come forward? Are you, did you want to speak? Are you sure? Well, it's lovely to have you in the audience tonight.
Not today.
Okay. So not on that. Is there anybody else that wants to come forward and speak on anything, not on the agenda, not for a public hearing? Okay, well, we'll move on. Item six is a public hearing. I'd like to go ahead and open the public hearing at 6:10 to consider text amendment case 2025-17, amending Kaiser Code Appendix A Development Code Section 2.110 dash commercial, or commercial mixed use related to audio-oriented uses.
Auto?
Did I say audio?
Yes.
Yeah, I couldn't hear that, sorry. Auto-oriented uses, as I was. Shane, dazzling, sir.
Oh, okay. Yes, thank you, Chair Lawyer, again. So yeah, so we're, we're, we're back at it here. A few months ago, we came to the Planning Commission, if y'all, some of y'all remember, some of you don't, but we came and we said, hey, we're going to look at Kaiser Station Area B a little bit, because there was a desire to open up some of those listed uses. So in Section 2.110.04 and .05, there's this section that says, hey, you can do these uses, but not these. And they were auto-centric. And if you just refresh the memory, it's in the staff report, but we'll just kind of like have a conversation. So to refresh the memory, we had a specific request from a user that said, hey, we're very interested in bringing a gasoline service station, as well as a drive-through restaurant that serves chicken fingers. So the Canes wanted to come to Kaiser. And so we opened up that public hearing to look at possibly modifying those uses, because none of those were allowed up there. And ultimately, after a hearing here, a hearing at council, and then a little bit of a pause, there was a community meeting, another hearing at council, ultimately, the, and I included in the packet, so you can kind of see the history, ultimately what ended up happening is we ended up allowing for, in Section 2.110.04, we allowed as a conditional use, a drive-through restaurant use. And only a drive-through restaurant use was the only thing we changed. We said, no, to the gas station, but the drive-through restaurant, we felt would be okay, as long as it was over on what we call the small triangle next to the transit area. So on the, it's not really the east side of Kaiser Station Boulevard, but it kind of is. It's kind of like on the, you know, southeast side, because Kaiser Station Boulevard runs at an angle. So anyway, so that is kind of where it all landed. Now, we roll forward a couple of months, and some things shifted and changed, but included in the packet is a resolution where City Council initiated the process to look at doing a text amendment for that area again, because of a letter of intent with an end-user for that triangle area that is a car wash and oil stop user. And so they came and ultimately going through the process, previously, it was a very finite look. So as the LOI came before council's consideration, council directed staff to bring a text amendment to look at opening up some of those other auto-centric uses in that area that would specifically, basically, give a little more opportunity to do something on that site next to transit. So ultimately, that kind of was what the resolution said. It didn't give specifics, hey, Shane do this, or Planning Commission do this. It was, let's look at it, let's see what makes sense. So staff looked at the different uses that were listed. We'd already kind of opened it up to allow for drive-through restaurants. So we did lift a few more, specifically, the, well, it's an SIC major category group, 754, because I know y'all know those numbers like right in your brain. I mean, I don't even know them, I'll have to look them up. But that, basically automotive services except for repair, that kind of captures some of the auto-oriented uses. Car washes is specifically one of them. Oil change facilities are one of them. Still is not opening it up to gas station uses. That was a pretty clear no when it came to what City Council action was taken previously. But we said, hey, the auto services, vehicle sales, auto dealers. So those were the, kind of the, the four things. We said, oh, we think these might make sense to move over there. So really, tonight, we're coming to you for a recommendation to say, do we agree? Do we not agree? Are there more auto-oriented uses that we wanted to add? Or are these too many? I think that, you know, previously, when we were before Planning Commission, I would say maybe it possibly was a little short-sighted on, and it was a little different, because it was, it came about in a strange way, an unusual way. It was something that was not on anybody's radar, but we looked at it very finitely of just this one specific user, because the Canes Restaurant wanted to come and possibly locate there. So I think this is trying to look at it a little more holistically. So what we've drafted is just that we would take those three uses, the auto parking, so if there was a park-and-ride, or maybe, you know, charging area, or, or something that came in in association with, you know, transit centers that, that is right there. So that use, the auto services except repair, which include, capture the Happy's car wash and oil stop user, where there's an LOI for, and other, there's some other categories in there as well. And then the auto dealers, and so those are, so that's what we have dialed up. That's what we're recommending. We think it makes sense. With that, I'll answer all of your questions. I won't answer all of your questions. I'll try, though.
Shane, why were gas stations initially prohibited in that area?
Sure, that's a great question. So it's a little bit hard to like pinpoint and say it's exactly this reason. What I can tell you, I've worked here for a very long time, I've lived here forever. In the 90s, there was a prohibition around Shamua Road and River Road, and saying basically no additional drive-throughs. And it was due to traffic, due to some safety concerns, things like that. So we had this like Shamua River Road overlay area in our development code way back in the 90s. And then that area got shifted a couple different times with some different things, like the revitalization plan kind of shifted how it was dealt with. But when Kaiser Station Plan was being developed, they basically lifted that language that specified the use restriction for the Shamua River Road overlay restriction area. I can't remember exactly what it was called. But basically, those uses, they said, we're not, we're going to have that same exact restriction in Area B, because Area B of Kaiser Station was imagined to be kind of a retail service center, and so they didn't want it to be auto-centric in nature. And so I think that was kind of the easy path, was like, hey, we already have this thing that's been in existence around Shamua and River Road, and we're going to apply that up there, because the zoning was commercial mixed, and the zoning in Area B was commercial mixed. And so that, that's kind of the history of it, of why it got there. The last time, we were before Planning Commission, a few months ago, we tweaked some language in there, because there was still a reference to the Shamua restriction area there that just, it doesn't apply anymore, because in, what, 2019, we rezoned all of River Road to mixed use. So like the CM zone doesn't apply to a property that's not zoned to CM. So it was kind of like a little bit of cleanup and catch-up that we did a couple months ago. But, but I think as far as the, the uses that were prohibited, it was specific to, hey, there's an example of what we already had prohibited, so we're going to lift that and put it there.
So it's really a cut-and-paste issue.
I mean, I, I think it was originally, yeah. So, I mean, this issue before the commission tonight is, I mean, it's a different, you know, a couple of months ago, went through a process and said, hey, we're going to now allow a drive-through restaurant, but very specifically, like, we're not allowing it over next to the houses on McLeod and Dennis Ray. Only across Kaiser Station Boulevard. I mean, that was pretty loud and clear direction that, and that's ultimately what the City Council adopted. And so now, City Council said, well, hey, we allow drive-through restaurants, let's initiate a text memo process to see if we want to allow a few more things over there. So it kind of like created this like almost look of maybe this side of the street's different than this side of the street. So I think that's where it is somewhat of a policy question, and, you know, are these uses appropriate for that area?
But it's in the boundaries of Kaiser Station.
Yeah, and I mean, and it's, this text amendment truly only affects one piece of, well, two pieces of property, but one already has a transit center on it. So it really is the only place it currently applies to.
And by approving this, we're not agreeing to it anywhere else, but just within.
That's, yes, that's 100% correct. And the other thing that I pointed out in the staff report is, by approving the text amendment, what it does is it creates a path for a future owner or a future user to possibly develop that. It does not obligate the city to allow that use. There's a master planning process that has to be gone through in Kaiser Station, and that is a quasi-judicial process versus the legislative one we're going through right now. So, you know, with any future development that happens up there, if it doesn't exactly match the current adopted master plan, they're going, an applicant would be before Planning Commission to ask for an amendment or a new master plan. And so there is additional opportunity for the public to weigh in on uses and building massings and orientations and what things look like, that kind of stuff.
Thank you.
Other questions? Shane, help me understand. Area B, what does retail service center mean?
I mean, that was just the title given to it. So on, I mean, on a, on a big scale, the retail service center said, okay, you've got Kaiser Station. Kaiser Station is broken into Area A, B, C, and D. Okay, so Area A essentially is everything to the east of the train tracks and north of Lock Haven, right? It's the, it's Target, it's Lowe's, it's Starbucks, it's what we think of automatically, we think of Kaiser Station, is what's been there the longest. And that's Area A Village Center. So everything north of, which is, this gets kind of fun, within Area A, there's two different sections. So there's Sports Center, right, which is essentially volcanoes and the BPA substation and some fields. So that's the Sports Center, there's Village Center. Area D Commerce Center, I think, is its little subtitle. Area C, I don't remember what we called that for what center that was.
Kaiser Station Center.
Just the Kaiser Station Center, okay? And that, and primarily zoned mixed use. It was imagined to have kind of a mix of housing and retail and jobs and the whole shebang. And then, yes, Area C was this retail service center. And, you know, there's a couple of goals and policies in the Kaiser Station Plan document itself, which like goes back like 2004, and wanting to protect traffic operations at Lock Haven. And so some concern for the McLeod-Gubser neighborhood and traffic impacts there. Also wanting to connect Dennis Ray via pedestrian and bicycle pathway into Area B. But I think the vision in that retail service center would be to allow some uses to be developed that could serve as kind of a gateway into Kaiser Station, as well as serve the direct, not just the bigger city, but specifically some opportunities for the immediate neighborhood to be served by uses that got developed in that area. And I mean, and just as a reminder, right now, there's a master plan that's adopted for Area B that has a 24,000 square foot movie theater footprint, a third, about 30,000 square foot medical office building footprint, some residential zoned property at the end of Dennis Ray, which would be kind of an open space area footpath connection, and I think three residential lots to be determined of what those might be developed. And then I believe it's a 10 And then I believe it's a 10,000 square foot, uh, retail slash restaurant slash whatever building over by the transit. So, that's what's, that's what's currently kind of approved out there, but clearly never has been built. Does that answer it? Sorry.
It does. I have a follow-up. Um, Shane, did you state that at some point this is likely to come back to Planning Commission in a quasi-judicial fashion?
Um, I, I do think that's probably the case. I, I don't think that, um, well, these uses that we're adding, so none of these were identified in the existing master plan that's adopted. So theoretically, if these uses were proposed in a future imagining of Area B, it can kind of like, you can kind of ascertain that, oh, a master plan amendment is going to be necessary. Um, now, I mean, if a user came along and wanted to develop exactly what the master plan that's already been approved, I mean.
So like CPD, real company, limited liability company on behalf of Happy Car Wash?
Yes.
So, again, I kind of feel like we're exposed to something a bit early, right? I mean, because it's, it's like, hey, here's this use. Also fix the code so this use can happen. Am I wrong in that kind of?
I, I think, I won't, I will, I will never say that you're wrong. I think I can un, I can understand that perspective. Um, I think that from, and I'll have to defer to Joe. I think from a process perspective.
That's, that's my main concern. I don't want to get us screwed up in process. Cause this isn't going to, it, this isn't ever going to get screwed up in the merits of.
Sure.
It's going to, it's going to get screwed up in process. So, I don't want to get us in a position where we're putting Mr. Lindsay spending the next two years fighting with Luba.
Yeah. Yeah. No, I think, I mean, Joe, do you want to speak to that a little bit from the process perspective at all?
Well, I, I think you're on safe ground here mostly because instead of, um, restricting the land more, you're potentially restricting it less. And so, the question really is, and we've talked about this, it's, it's unfortunate that we know who the suitor is. Because if not, we could just ask the 30,000-foot view question, which is a legislative idea, right? Is, can we envision that maybe the, the law that's, you know, currently overlaying this, this ground, is it too restrictive? Or maybe could we, you know, put conditional uses on here? So, maybe we could have cooler things out there and then just, you know, the grass and trees right now. So, um, it is, it is one of those things that if you can put it in a, kind of an objective, uh, universe of its own where, where, should the law be that maybe we should at least consider some of these other uses? Um, and that, that's hopefully where we're at, the hat that we're putting on tonight. And not the, I don't know about a car wash or I don't know about, you know, an oil thing. Unfortunately, the categories are those. And so, I, I mean, if you, if you really don't think it's advisable to have those, uh, just from a legislative standpoint, then, you know, if that's the advice you give, that's the advice you give.
So.
But if you, if you do think that it could at least be something that could be entertained in the future, then that's the advice you give.
Well, I'm not, I don't, I guess my question isn't the merits of the legislative process. It's just trying to ascertain whether or not we're jeopardizing any future quasi-judicial process because we, the, 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 um, catalyst for the legislative process is effectively a future quasi-judicial action that we're going to be asked to take.
Yeah, and, and what I would say to that is a lot of times when people come in for planning, they will do a zone change with it.
Right.
You know what I mean? And I've even seen where, and it's hard to do because the goalpost stuff, where they consolidate those cases so they hear them for efficiency sake. And so, you're assuming you're getting a zone change when you're applying for something. And that's not always the case, right? So, you, you kind of have to put on both hats at the same time. At least here, you're putting on one hat. And then they'll come forward next time if, if they really want to pursue this.
So, you don't think there's a risk?
Um, there's always, I, I would think.
Minimal risk, I guess, is what you would say.
There's, yeah, yeah, yeah. It's, I think it's a tolerable risk.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's helpful, thank you. I appreciate the clarification on that. I just, we don't have the applicant here tonight, I don't think, I hope not. Um, because last.
No applicant though. Just, I mean, just to, to clarify, the cap, actually in this case.
Fair quotes.
But in this case, the city council passed a resolution to initiate this process. I would say your concern, might, you might be having a little bit of that leftover feeling of maybe the Kane's process, which I think did.
I don't want to put a name to it, but it felt just, it felt a little, it felt a little pre-baked.
Yeah, but I, but I do think that that was one of the, the issues with that process is that it did kind of come about in a, a very unorthodox method. Because normally text amendments are either initiated by staff. Because it's a, an error or a needed, you know, tool that we need. Either state law or dealing with developers that are like, oh, this, this code doesn't work. So, it's either something that Shane has identified, Planning Commission collectively, collectively has identified in our work plan for the year maybe, or the state has mandated on us or encouraged us to look at. That's normally how text amendments come about. But the city has historically, in my career, many times, people have come and petitioned the city to say, hey, we would like you to consider a text amendment. Neither they go to council or they come directly to Planning Commission. So, in this case, I would say that is the little bit, the difference from a process perspective that I personally feel a lot more comfortable with since there's an actual resolution that city council who heard consideration of a letter of intent to go, okay, we're considering this letter of intent. Yeah, staff move forward and talk about stuff with them. And Shane, you staff person, go ahead and initiate the process and go through the Planning Commission process to determine, does it make sense to open up some additional uses that are auto-oriented? You know, again, we already kind of rang that bell with the drive-through restaurants and the determination was made that that would be appropriate. So, is there a little broader look we want to look at if we apply those same standards to it? So, that's kind of where we're at. I don't know if that helps, but process-wise, it does help me a little bit. I mean, it makes it a little bit cleaner, so.
Mr. Lindsay, I'll go to Commissioner.
Thank you. The other thing is, we tried to put in language even to a letter of intent, which isn't necessarily legally obligatory, but, um, that we are a government and that we have to have certain processes that are at arm's length. Because we're also the property owner, which is also odd.
Right.
But that somebody pursuing our property has to know, when we do these processes, it has to be the arm's length transaction. Where you guys just make the decision on the merits yourselves. And then, and then so does, uh, city council.
Commissioner Scruggs.
Shane, you talked about appropriate auto-related uses. What would be an inappropriate auto-related use?
Uh, I mean, hon- honestly, um, Commissioner Scruggs, that is, I mean, that's a, that's a policy question. Uh, it's a, it's a question for Planning Commission to consider. I mean, it, it isn't, there's nothing that makes something overtly appropriate or inappropriate by its nature. I mean, I know earlier you'd asked me, you know, why, why is this here? And I, I do believe that part of why it was there is that we had said, hey, traffic impacts, things like that. We have this model along River Road, so we'll apply it. But when you're looking at long range, especially, especially with Kaiser Station, which was a big comprehensive plan amendment change, there was an overall look because clearly, like, there's a ton of drive-through restaurants in, across the street, right? I mean, so, so I think there is that element where it was a plan that was developed holistically. And so, we're 25 years later kind of going, okay, does it make sense from a city's perspective, from the Planning Commission's perspective, to open up some more opportunities?
Well, my concern about that word is that it's too broad.
Fair.
It's, it's a judgmental kind of thing and really doesn't belong in policy.
Yeah, that's fair.
Shane, uh, looking at A to parking not associated with an allowed use, is that, is that the park and ride?
Could be, yeah. I, I mean, it'd be, it'd be something in that vein. Uh, parking garage, park and ride, a paid parking lot, something that's not in conjunction with another, like a, like a building type use.
Okay.
So, again, something inherently that if somebody's going to it, they're driving a car to it. I mean, that is 100% what it's for, right?
Commissioner Grinss.
So, in a typical commercial mixed-use zone, these uses would likely just be permitted outright?
They are, correct. Those, those uses are permitted outright other than in this restriction area. Which again, it was tied originally to Shimawa and River Road, but then also applied to Area B of Kaiser Station for properties that are zoned CM.
Thank you.
That's a good note. Commissioner King, you're being quiet.
I know, I have something to ask.
Go for it, please.
So, uh, following along on some of the questions, the, you know, automobile parking not associated with allowed use, those specific, uh, you know, like that, that type of parking, you could find it in the SIC 752, correct? Is that what that's, that 752 is referencing or what is that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, that, that's what the paren, the parents are next to, yeah.
Okay, so if you happen to have a, a copy of that old book, which I do, I bought it at a thrift store, uh, for work, you can look those up. But, um, okay, that's helpful to know that that number is associated with that.
Yeah, sorry about that. Like, I should have made that more clear.
No worries.
Yeah.
So, I just got to ask, because you got, we have more documentation here than we've seen in the past. We've got this ordinance and this resolution and the land use goals. What's, what's, tell me, tell me about that. Why do we have that?
Yeah, so, um, what that is, is that is what just got adopted that you all heard earlier.
Got it, okay.
So, be- because this was so fresh, but also if you remember right, I mean, for those that were planning commissioners, we had this request. It came in, what, what, was it in May or June or July? I, I don't know. I can't remember right now. I think I put it in here. Uh, well, I could look on the ordinance actually. Twat, okay, perfect. Um, so, there was a request made and, and that ordinance that was included, that includes the findings and everything. It shows exactly what was the final adoption, um, the other thing. So, basically I was giving you that just so you knew the historical context of where council landed.
Got it.
On the previous recommendation Planning Commission had made.
Okay, so, I'm going to break this down Barney style. Um, so drive-through windows or car service associated with eating and drinking, that's already been approved, correct? So, um, help me understand, oh, because now, now you're, you're moving it from C as a standalone part of the code now, just shifting it down to.
Yeah, it, it was because it was the only thing in the category. So, when, when this was brought before, there was drive-through car service uh, in association with the restaurant use, right? The drive-through restaurant and gasoline service station. And Planning Commission actually did make a recommendation to say, yeah, okay, we'll allow them both in Area B. And then it, that didn't end up happening. Gasoline service station kind of got peeled off. And so, it was left with just this one thing. Well, now that we're bringing these other three items up and there's some modifiers to those uses about like, hey, let's protect queuing of, you know, the parking areas and yada, yada, yada. That's why it had to be struck out above and put down below, so.
Okay, so then parking, we said parkers ride, automobile services except repair. So, that could be tires, that could be oil changes, that could be basically anything except for what they would classify CND or, uh, CND work in.
Yeah, I mean, and it is, as, as, as Commissioner King had alluded to, it is specific to that SIC book, like 754. So, I, I mean, I brought my SIC book just because I thought you guys might ask the question.
For those of us not playing the game, tell us what an SIC book is.
Oh, so it's the standard industrial classifications manual.
Okay.
And it is awesome because we use the 1987 version. And so, we're not going to really get into that right now. Just know that like my whole life is sometimes like an episode of Parks and Rec. So, this right here just goes right along with it, okay? But sometimes when you have a giant document, like in a development code that's 500 pages long, you know, written in the nineties that used this because that was standard practice, some of these things we have started weeding out. Our River Chair Overlay District doesn't necessarily use the SIC manual, but it is still embedded throughout it. So, yeah, we, we haven't done a big giant rewrite. So, the SIC manual is basically a federal book that says, hey, these are the kind of businesses and this is how we classify them. Not everything, you will not find everything in here. I have to make interpretations sometimes. But currently this SIC 754, for example, it has things such as car washes. And it has things like auto emissions testing. It would have, um, lubricating services, towing, um, detailing. Car, I already said car washes, uh, what else? Yeah. Basically, there's like 16 different categories of car washes and they break it down to truck washing, car washing, things like that. So, um, and then also basically kind of your tire battery accessory stores, like the, the lighter, not full-blown auto shop where you're tearing down engine and heavy metals and oils everywhere, but.
Well, that's, that.
Quick lube, that kind of stuff.
Because in my interpretation, if I look at four, vehicle sale, sales and secondary repair, what is secondary repair? To me, that says the service shop within the dealership.
Yes, yes.
That would be in excess of repair. So, you have sort of contradict, contradicting terms within the code.
Yeah, I mean, it has to do with how they categorize it. But the vehicle, vehicle sales and secondary repair is, is kind of exactly what, you're an auto dealer and you.
Yeah.
Do some fixing, right? But being just a straight repair shop, a Kaiser Automotive or whatever, isn't your primary thing. And that, it gets a little bit tricky with uses. And I mean, and that is where there's been a little bit of a move in more recent years where uses have been made a little more generalized, um, but.
Well, I appreciate you explaining that. Only, only Commissioner Grinss and Commissioner King were getting excited about the conversation that was happening.
Yeah, SIC.
Those of us that don't speak, um, full planaries, uh, we're going, what? SIC, that's like spelling thing in the grammar.
As I understand it.
Not wrong.
This would approve a car dealership in that area?
If, if the Planning Commission put forth a recommendation, it could theoretically allow a car dealership in the area, assuming council also approved our recommendation.
Can't visualize a car dealership in that spot.
Smart cars, the small ones.
Well, no, I'm, I'm just, as we're looking at what's the best use available for that spot, I just, I have trouble visualizing a car dealership there.
And we're, just, I'm sorry, I apologize. Just to clarify though, and this is where, again, we go back to this process discussion we had earlier, we're not talking about a zone change. We're not talking about a site-specific approval. Even though this change of the text applies to this specific area, it is looking at the uses versus the triangles this big. Because I guess in a world if there was a zone change and now you expanded somehow different property that we're not imagining right now. It, so it really, like, just so you understand, um, Commissioner Scruggs, like, it is one of those pieces that I, I think you're, you're right on track with, I, how would that work? And I, I kind of agree with you. Like, I don't see that working really. Um, but then the question in my mind, and, and again, this is, this is exactly what I'm looking for from Planning Commission too. Because Planning Commission says, hey, we don't want that use in there. Make that as part of your recommendation. And when we take it to council with your recommendation, that won't be on the listed use. As a staff person, I looked at it and said, okay, if we're going to open it up to this and to this, what other things, you know, what's the difference between a car lot without an allowed use or an auto dealer? They're kind of like the same thing. So, that was why it's listed in there. But I would agree with you, it might be a challenge, be a very small, small stock.
Ship on Hawthorne is pretty small.
Maybe a Carvana, a tower, that'd be probably, I've seen those on TV. There's one in Phoenix.
With the objection to the three-story building on River Road and you're going to put Carvana.
Yeah, I, I would actually, yeah, I think it'd be awesome. We do have height restrictions, but out at Kaiser Station, they're 50 feet.
Yeah, but by putting that there, we're not committing to any approval of that.
Correct.
All right, so, we've had a lot of really good discussion around this. Um, I guess, go ahead.
Real quick, um, you got me thinking about something. So, what's the zone of the, the, the retail section that's on the other side of Area B? Of Kaiser Station Boulevard? That's not, that's not this.
That's part of, that, both in Area B?
Yeah.
Or in Area C? Are we talking across Lock Haven or across Kaiser Station Boulevard?
Kaiser Station Boulevard.
So, where the transit center is?
No, where the.
Where the big field is.
Medical.
Yes, so that's all, that's. Yes, so that's all, that's, most of it is zoned the same, other than the end of Dennis Ray is zoned residential.
Okay.
So, basically, if you took Dennis Ray and the lot depth and just kinda pushed it all the way out to the east, that's all residential. But then, everything else is the same as where the transit and this triangle is, it's all CM.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Brandy, you've been sitting there awfully quiet. I'm assuming you probably have thoughts on this. Should we ask, is it appropriate to ask the city manager? He's never shown up for these very much.
He's staff, he could be part of the staff report.
Great.
I think the last time I came is when you did the first amendment to that.
Oh, yeah, that might be right, yeah. But I think you had to leave early, that's right.
Yeah, and I, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Witham, we, in these amendments, you're allowing it as a conditional use, so the quasi-judicial part would come back as, somebody said they wanted a car dealership on that property, it would come back as a conditional use. It's not an automatic, I thought a byright development within that zone.
Yeah, not only is it a conditional use, but it's within the Kaiser Station area. So, honestly, the master plan amendment, the master planning process is kind of a bigger deal. It's a little bit of a bigger lift than the conditional use piece of it is, but there is that additional element of review that's gonna happen no matter what.
Yep.
So... The other comment I would add too is, when the planning commission looked at it last May, you came out with a little broader opening for the council, and they ended up going the narrow one. But when we were thinking about whether this would work or not, that was taken into consideration somewhat, that the planning commission had already opened up the door a little bit wider and said, we're okay with more than just the drive-through restaurant, but something else, so...
Would it be your interpretation, Mr. Brown, that since the council said, hey, go do this text amendment, they're probably gonna be okay with some of these uses, generally?
I believe so, since they approved this letter of intent. But, again, like Mr. Witham said, it's all contingent upon approval of the conditional uses. And ultimately, they'll have to come before the planning commission and the city council and show a plan and defend their franchise and what they wanna do to this group and the city council.
I don't envy your position, it's tough, because you're trying to offload a piece of property. And yet, I think there's also this requirement that we take into consideration what these will do to areas that have sat vacant for the history of basically Kaiser. And you've also got sort of a mandate coming from city council. So, I appreciate you being here tonight and being willing to answer any questions. I think that, as I'm looking at this from the broad perspective, I struggle a little bit with the idea of a dealership. I think that's just, for me, that's just tough. I don't know how you could do that well. And frankly, from a reasonable person's perspective, the idea of pneumatic air guns going off that close to a neighborhood in general is a hard no for me, which would be exacerbated by a dealership with secondary repair. I don't know that that is gonna be necessarily the case all of the time for something maybe like a Jiffy Lube or something like that. So, I don't know that I'm necessarily too hard of a no on that for the automotive services. But for me, as I'm thinking about this, I'm a hard no on the dealers and the secondary repair piece. That's just my own personal thing. Of concern relative to park and ride, we actually are seeing an active shift in ODOT in some places of eliminating park and rides, because they've become refuge for other behaviors on those properties that are creating a significant amount of solid waste challenges and other behavioral and mental health crisis issues that frankly, our police departments already stretch. Then, if you're not paying attention, the council's gonna be talking about that in the next couple weeks. So, I just have a little bit of a hard time of thinking about that, of allowing that kind of use, only because I think there's merit, because there is the transit station right across the street, but also, transit does have places you can park. And I just don't know that adding a bunch of extra parking there, to me, makes a ton of sense. So, for me, I'm an absolute hard no on automotive dealers with secondary repair, and I'm 60/40 on the park and ride. So, that's just kinda my thoughts. Commissioner Lopez, what are you thinking?
I'm thinking that this would bring more excitement to our meetings, right? With these conditional, that's what I think I heard we wanted. We wanted more action up in here. And saying that, they're not gonna be approved instantly, you know? The dealership too, I mean, it's a, there's creative people, right, that might be able to put one in there, but same thing, I can't see it, so I'm not thinking of that's a possibility. Just the amount of money it would take to do that. And I just can't see it, I just can't imagine it there. So, I don't think it's gonna, I wouldn't think it'd be coming that way. So, that's kinda where I'm at. You know, they're still gonna come back to us.
Well, keep in mind, if, as part of the legislative process, if we say no to the dealers, then that is the recommendation that goes to council, assuming council agrees, that would be a no, that'd be a non-starter for anybody to come forward with any further action, so...
Yeah. No, that's what I'm saying, even if we did, or even if they decided that they wanted to, it's still had to come back. So, that's kinda where I'm at.
Commissioner Witters, what are you thinking?
Uh, thank you. Mr. Witham, how big is this lot, actually? I know it's pretty small, but, I mean...
Mr. Brown, do you know off the top of your head how big, I can look, I can find out for you really quick, I just have to pull up a map and do some math. It's weird, because it's like four little parcels that I, you have to kinda add together.
Let's say you're 1.2 acres.
Well, okay.
I agree. I mean, I think in automotive dealership, just, I couldn't fathom having one there. And I worry also about the vehicle sales with secondary repair. To me, I see a loophole there. I see a garage that sells a couple cars, you know, and suddenly, you know, you're getting around it. So, I worry about that a little bit. And the other thing that I've been thinking about, I've been pondering about, is, I mean, what was, I know this, like, from a 10,000-foot level, what was the intention for Kaiser Station as a whole when it was built? I mean, I can't imagine bringing in a repair shop or, you know, an oil change was what they, to me, it seems like it's, you know, you've got your big box that we can have in Kaiser, but we don't have to have in the main strips. You have a way to bring people off the freeway and bring some, you know, revenue into Kaiser. I imagine, you know, between that and a theater and some medical things, you know, you have what's hoped to be a place for people to come, spend a little bit of time, spend some money, get some food, whatever. I don't see that with, you know, a service place. You know, I see, you know, I see oil messes and, you know, loud noises, and people coming in and taking off, and, you know, you know, that's, so I guess, was there, what was, I guess, again, from a high level, but was...
Yeah. I mean, man, that could take months to like drill down into, really? I mean, I'll say the really quick Cliff Notes version is, is we had, I mean, what is it, 285-some acres out around the freeway, since I was a small, small child, like since the 80s. And it was all zoned industrial land. And it sat there, and nothing ever happened, nothing ever happened, nothing ever happened. And then, around 2002, maybe, I don't know, somewhere 25 years ago, a developer approached the city, the city entered into a development disposition agreement with a private developer to say, hey, we wanna reimagine this area and provide some utility to the citizens of Kaiser, right? So, it went from being this industrial business, park-heavy kind of vibe, industrial zoned land, to this more combo land of industrial and commercial. So, essentially, like, the model of Kaiser Station is what, like, real estate developers up and down the west coast of, you know, Washington, California, and Oregon would call up, it's a power center. It has a big anchor tenant, target, a big anchor tenant, Lowe's, and that's gonna drive a certain amount of interest. And then, you got a whole bunch of other service-oriented, retail-oriented uses. So, in Kaiser Station, it was a big master planning effort, because everything was within what was called the Shamau Activity Center, and it was industrial business park, campus light industrial, heavier industrial, so it was all industrial-focused. And so, they went through this big massive process to kinda rezone all of the land collectively, but they did break it into these quadrants. And so, 25% of Area A is industrial uses, theoretically. So, like, y'all shop there, so you try to, I'll give you a test later, you tell me what they are, and see if you can figure it out. But, so, it is about how things were categorized. And so, it is, I mean, I think it's, I think it's, to your point, I think, yes, this is a shifting from what was originally imagined out there in some regards. Also, Area B never intended to have a transit center. Like, that was gonna be in the Area C area originally, and then it was like, well, this isn't practical, because how can you build it? And, oh, we can actually do that here. And it wasn't gonna be a transit center, it was gonna be a rail. Like, that was what the vision of the future is, which, I mean, and that's hard. Like, for me, that's why, that's why I put the parking lot piece in there as an allowed use. If you had garaged parking and that transit center turned into an actual, you know, frequent light rail down the road, which could theoretically happen with billions of dollars and lots of decades, right?
And zero land use issues whatsoever.
Right, yeah, no, you know, we're like, we're talking about it, right? I'm dreaming, but like, that's where, oh, okay, you know, whatever. So, but anyway, Rob, I think, I think that's the thing that is hard. In that area, that Area B was, I mean, it is kinda that retail service center piece, so kind of these retail uses, probably more a little bit strip mall kinda development that would have users. And then, actual users come and actual property owners come, and, you know, medical office came in, so there was a thought of, oh, okay, if there's this medical office building, maybe some other retail uses that go along with the medical realm might go in there. So, yeah. Does that help?
It does. And like I said, I just, personally, I still wrestle with the idea, you know, it's kind of forward-facing part, you know? I don't know that, I can't imagine that was necessarily what was envisioned, but again, that was...
It's a little bit of a bizarre thing to see when you first come in the city and you've never been here, oh, look, I can get my oil changed.
Right. That's what I was thinking. I appreciate it.
There's the added struggle here, the city's on this for a very long time. There has been attempts in the past, I mean, I think that everybody was really excited about the two-screen movie theater, whatever it was gonna be, 15 or so years ago, and it just never materialized. The market has not been able to materialize anything on this property. And the city's like, we really don't want this piece of property anymore, because it's just sitting there, and it's prime for development, which is, I think, how we're sort of backing ourselves into a process here a little bit, is because like, there's something here, there's a palette by the council to say, we need to offload, the current council says we don't need to be owning land. And so, you know, Mr. Brown's got the unfortunate task of trying to figure out how to offload chunks of property that the council, the city's owned for probably 20 years, right? I mean, it's been a long time. So, you know, to do that, Mr. Brown's gotta create an environment that's competitive for people to come in and actually wanna purchase it. And I think that's kind of where we're here. It's like, you know, you strike when the iron's hot, and at this point, to be able to get there, it sounds like some of these uses might need to be considered. But I agree, it's tough.
And I understand that. I mean, we're, you know, in order to sell it, it needs to be...
Usable.
Yeah, you need to create a market if a market doesn't exist. So, and this may be the route to do that. But with that said, I still do have some reservations about the automotive dealer and vehicle sales. I think that's kind of a, kind of workaround, you know, for doing that. And then, I also agree, maybe the parking that associated with allowed use, I don't see, I don't see it.
That one, for me, is 60/40, because like, the parking, it's like, well, maybe, but during the time where it's used appropriately, it's probably fine. But I can guarantee you, there's gonna be some kid out there that just watched Fast and the Furious, is gonna make that parking lot the next place to go out and drift and make all kinds of stupidity, because they got caught at Kaiser Rapids and they can't do it there no more. So, I can promise you, that's when the neighbors are gonna be very upset, and they're gonna woke up, you know, with the coffee can on the back of the Subaru.
I predate Fast and Furious, but I've been there.
Mr. Brown?
I have the, I have the benefit of being able to talk with a lot of companies about these too. And I can tell you, they're thinking, they think 10 to 20 years down the road, too. So, they're, when, they, you know, maybe talking oil change right now, but they also realize that's probably a dying business model. So, they're coming in, building with, coming in as really energy stations. And, you know, when, feasibly, if combustion engines go out of use in 20 years, and we're down to electric, these guys are building in electric infrastructure to convert that over to charging stations, and then something to occupy you while you're sitting there, charging your vehicle. But, and the other thing I would add too is, I also have the privilege to talk with these companies and hear about their brands too. And they're not all created equal. That's the nice thing about a conditional use, is that you get to take that into consideration, that, when you're talking about something. So, if it, in any realm of possibility, you think that something might fit, then at this stage in the legislative process, you would wanna keep the gate open, knowing that you have a mechanism to close the gate during the quasi-judicial process.
But if you open that gate too broad, then your applicable substantive criteria becomes very hard to meet, right? So, it theoretically could make it, in some cases, a little more hard to close the door during a quasi-judicial process, if the door doesn't need to be open. So, I mean, but I see what you're saying. I think that's a very valid point. So, I think you're almost encouraging us to think beyond the scope of what's in this amendment, if there's other things that we may think we wanna add in there?
Well, and I think Director Witham is kinda saying add or take away from that. So, either way.
Commissioner Scruggs?
We started this discussion to fix a cut-and-paste issue, which I have both made that mistake and have been victimized by that mistake. And I do agree that it needs to be fixed. I'm a little concerned that we're getting too specific about potential uses. Give you one example, in Japan, if you have an electric car, you can drive in and they'll change the battery in the car, poof, just like getting, refueling your car. But if we're trying to write language, that would be an excellent location for that kind of activity. And so, I'm concerned if we start specifying what kinds of uses might apply, we might miss something, or we might restrict something that could be a real opportunity. And so, that's the extent of my thoughts today.
Commissioner Grents?
Chair, we've been, we've been debating this for some time now. I'm wondering if there's anybody in the audience that would like to speak on it, or if it would be appropriate to close the record?
You know, maybe. I didn't have anybody sign up. Ms. Penwell, did you wanna, does anybody wanna talk about, thank you for being the parliamentarian here, as I'm just taking you that way on. Does anybody wanna come forward and speak in favor or opposition to this? We're still fact-finding. If you would, please state your name, five minutes? Please state your name and city of residence for the record, and you've got five minutes. And who's keeping time?
It won't take that long. Tammy Kuns, Kaiser resident. The only thing about this part that concerns me is the retail for cars. The other stuff doesn't bother me at all. But, again, I can't picture it being a car lot. Doesn't mean we can't get like an Avis or some sort of car rental place there. But that would be the only thing that would really concern me, because we have the school down the road, and the retirement community and that kind of thing. I like it. I like it.
Fair point. Thank you, Tammy. I have a semantics question, Mr. Lindsey. What's the difference between must and shall? For reference, I'm looking at sub one, I think it's sub one?
They are synonymous.
I'm sorry?
Must and shall are synonymous.
Okay, thank you. I always, I always see shall or may. I don't think I've ever really seen must.
Must is equivalent to shall.
Fair enough, thank you. Anybody else out there would like to speak in favor or opposition? No, thank you for that point, Commissioner Rentsch. I appreciate you keeping track of the meeting. All right, with that, final thoughts? Oh, Commissioner King?
I have a couple, or maybe just one. So I do agree with, you know, the automotive dealer and the vehicle sales with secondary repair could be an issue, especially since the neighborhood is right there. But I do, I don't think that there would be an issue with the services like repair, like an oil change or, you know, battery, change, whatever. They're all over in cities, just kind of in little pockets. I mean, you know, Jiffy Lube down the street is on a very small lot and it's always quiet after a certain hour. So I don't think that anything like that would be too detrimental to a community, at least on a personal level. An automotive parking not associated with allowed use could be EV charging stations, perhaps. I would assume, I don't know if it's in SIC, but.
In eighty-seven?
It could be an interpretation.
Probably not eighty-seven.
Yeah, I was going to say, I mean, yeah, for the, for the automotive parking in the SIC manual, it's literally parking garages, parking lots. I mean, it's, it's, it's a generalized category. So no, definitely isn't talk about EV charging stations, but it would be captured in mind. I mean, it's, if it's a parking lot, that's a parking lot. But it'd also be garaged parking. It also would be park and ride because that's not its own category listed. So it's kind of like any of those. So just to clarify.
Yeah. And as, as it's a conditional use, you know, there, if there are, if something comes about that's, you know, an automated or automotive services use that comes across, you know, Shane's desk, it's kind of, oh, this might have an issue with a neighbor or it could be loud or anything like that. Even vehicle sales and secondary repair as a conditional use, you can put conditions on it to say, okay, great, you want to do vehicle sales and secondary repair, but your secondary repair has to be done by this hour because of neighborhood, blah, blah, blah. You can make conditions like that. That one's, you know, pretty out there, but, you know. So I think that there are, if this is all put in it, there are measures to protect the community and, and those neighboring residential uses.
I think it's a law of nature that when you have an automotive service shop, whoever's on the microphone paging the person in service shop has to have one of the worst voices. And if you work in that business, bless you, thank you, but it's been my experience that sometimes, and I think it's the microphone, actually, it's not the human, it's the microphone. But yeah, they're just, it's very loud and I don't want to hear that at nine o'clock in the morning if I'm working nights and trying to sleep. So I'm, you know, that's the thing. No? Can we say only a park and ride as long as it services Kaiser Little League Park?
I mean, I think you can put anything in the text you want as a recommendation. I'll take it, I'll dig whatever you want.
I think, I think we can even get Mr. Dempster on board with that one.
I think you're on to something there.
It would solve a very big issue. Right?
Pretty tall building to make that dump in parking if they need.
Well, I don't know, but at least it's an acre and a half. It's more than what we got right now. Okay, we good to close the public hearing? Any objections to closing the public hearing? All right. I will close the public hearing at seven, seven oh nine. And let's put a motion on the table for consideration, please.
I move the Planning Commission recommend approval of the proposed text amendments to City Council with the following changes. Eliminate automobile parking not associated with an allowed use, vehicle sales and secondary repair, and automotive dealers. And any associated changes that would trickle down through the other relevant codes.
Is there a second on the motion?
Could you repeat the conditions?
So removing two, four?
Yeah, eliminating automobile parking not associated with allowed use, vehicle sales and secondary repair, and automotive dealers.
I will second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Do we got that recorded? Do you want to repeat it?
I didn't get the second.
Commissioner Scruggs? To approve with the changes and just to provide a quick summary, removing sub two, sub four, and sub five. So that would leave us with drive-through windows, automotive services. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimous with one absent. Good luck, Mr. Brown. We'll see if council likes it. All right. Talia, what'd you think? Was that so much fun?
Yes.
Cool. All right, new old business staff report.
Scrambling there. Make sure that when we get that to the next stage that I modify text correctly. Yeah, so I don't, I don't have anything super formal for our new and old business. There's, you know, a few different things that have been happening. We have a couple of recent subdivisions that have been applied for small, middle housing, of course. One on McLeod, one on Wieland that just came in last week. You know, I've been looking at a small, like six lot one. We have had some building permits issued for the old Sonic building. Finally, permits were actually issued on that. So, I mean, I think Walla Walla Sweet Onion Rings are in our future, hopefully sooner than later. I haven't heard about construction schedule or anything like that. Obviously, I think, reference, the three store building on River Road was referenced tonight. There's the rebuild of what used to be Freeman Chiropractic that's happening right now. That's going to be the, the new accounting firm. So, yeah, there's some, there's some different things happening. There's some permits that have been applied for up in Area A of Kaiser Station, haven't been issued yet. But to kind of build out the rest of where REI is, that section. So there's some permits that have been applied up there. Yeah, I think that's, do you know what I'm missing? Anything else? Oh, the maze. Yeah, oh, the old Sherrys, fuck Kaiser, is coming to the old Sherrys, you know, size, signs are, I believe, up. You're welcome. I'll say it correctly. Yeah, so that's, that, I haven't heard when they're opening, but I'm, you know. Yeah, they're, they're real close. And then the maze building. Yes, that's right. Yes, churches are, so we got, we got a lot of stuff going on. So we're staying busy. Do you all have any questions? I got to get off this thing, man.
I just, we, we have a habit of making the news for the wrong reasons sometimes. Names, bollards, stuff like that. All right, anything else to add on that? All right, Councilor Duran, what's, what's, what's going on in y'all's world? Actually, you know, Mr. Brown, what else? We never get to ask you, what else? We heard from, we heard from Shane and all that. I mean, we always hear from Commissioner, Councilor Duran, but what else? Not to put you on the spot, but you're on the spot.
Well, I think Commissioner, or Councilor Duran may have planned to share this, but we have the strategic planning task force. So you all wrestled with the first draft of it probably a year ago, a year and a half ago. And the task force has picked that up again when they're meeting tomorrow night to look at that at five thirty. So, and then also the public safety work group also to figure out how to, for us to maintain long-term our, our police department. And, you know, those are the kind of big things going on. Yeah, I have just a lot of, lot of, lot of good stuff going on.
Thanks for letting me put you on the spot. Appreciate it.
Lot of interest, lot of, lot of economic development.
Good.
Going on, so it's just one of the reasons we're here for today.
Councilor Duran, I apologize. Back to you, sir. He took all my thunder. No. No, I'm, I'm involved in the police fee task force. We're talking, there's a few of us counselors that are talking about the, what we're going to need in the future for the police and looking at if we're going to need to increase our fee. So that's something we're talking about. We're trying to figure out how to do, do what we need to do in the city without raising funds. But if we do, we're talking about going to the voter if we need to increase fees. So that's something that we're working on over the next couple of months. At the last city council meeting, we authorized the city manager to sign a grant agreement for the Kaiser Rapids Parks Synthetic Turf Field, Turf Field Project Three. So that's moving ahead. I don't know if anybody's been out and seen what's going on on the Phase Two right now, but it's, it's moving along. So if you, if you want to get out and see some stuff happening again at the Kaiser Rapids Park, it's, it's moving along out there now. And then we, also at the last meeting, we adopted a resolution authorizing city manager to sign a letter of intent for Area C, the, the big triangle where the houses are at McLeod, Lock Haven, and Shamala at that corner. So that is in the process of being tied up also. So we'll, we'll probably see some more of that stuff, the uses for that coming here in the next few months. So there's, as, as the city manager was commenting, we've got a lot of economic development stuff coming up. And we'll be, I imagine we'll be seeing, seeing that come with some kind of changes for conditional use or master plan stuff in the future. That's probably the, the stuff that you guys might be interested in that we've done recently. Well, Don, I'd like to make sure if we can please have on here the youth liaison if Talia wants to provide, but is there anything you want to tell us? What's cool happening to McNary? If you're not prepared, that's totally okay, but you have to be ready next time.
Sorry, can you repeat the question?
So, so typically with the youth liaison, we just, you know, what's, what's happening around the school, what's exciting, maybe some thoughts or things that you want people to know that may not otherwise be exposed to it because they don't have kids that go to McNary.
Okay, so just like basic.
Sure, whatever you feel. I mean, what, you know, it's, it's your, it's your minute.
Oh, okay. Sorry, I'm not.
If you're not prepared, that's fine. So I think next time, just keep an eye on the agenda. If there's like some cool things, you can grab like McNary newsletter. If you want a really good example, Liam, that's, does parks, he's been doing parks for the last couple of years, he can give you a pretty good idea on, on some stuff that he likes to bring. He, he actually, you know, he's got a list, he's got a book, and he, he does a much better job than I do, so it's a good kid. All right, so let's see, November twenty, we're already canceling meetings next year, I mean, it's legit, right? So November eleventh?
Hey, I have nothing to do with that. I'm not that smart to think that far ahead or to know what a calendar says. But Don said, hey, next year, we need, we should talk about this because the calendar is different next year. So yes, so that is because of the holiday falling on the actual planning commission meeting. Does that make sense? So we could move it and then Don will know. And then when there's scheduling that needs to happen or whatever.
Any preferences one or another on either canceling it or moving it to the fourth or the eighteenth? Or should we just play it by ear and schedule?
Yeah, we, I mean, honestly, you, honestly, you all could choose to push that to a future time. It just was obviously fresh. Don brought it up, threw it on the agenda, was like, oh, yeah, it's perfect. Let's ask, because if people have strong opinions, we'll.
I, I, I mean, I think that we've always kind of had a preference to try to be as flexible as possible and not knowing what can occur in the next twelve months. You know, we do have short session coming up and heaven only knows what's going to change there. So I would say let's just stay as flexible as possible. I'm not super keen on trying to pick a date just because if you have the business need, then we need to be able to be responsive to that. But obviously, you know, a week after the eighteenth probably isn't super great for some people, but.
Right, and I think, yeah, we can talk about it. Yep, that's fine.
Okay. So put a pin in that for now?
Sure.
Cool. And let's see, Commissioner King, it looks like you're up for council. Is that November twentieth, Don?
No, I made a mistake. That was a carryover from missing the September meeting, so it would be December seventh.
December seventh?
Yes.
Okay, are you free to be able to do that on December seventh?
Yes, I believe so.
Okay, and you've done it already, haven't you?
Yeah.
Great.
I was going to say, I don't have a DeLorean to, going to eighty-eight to go back in time.
Come on.
That's going to be a hard one for me to attend, but I'm glad that we changed the date.
Yeah, DeLorean, I was like, wait, she is going back? I love it.
Yes, they are.
Cool, well, there's been some cool stuff going on. Last week, there was a little fundraiser put on by some folks from Environmental Services for people that have done that type of volunteer work. I got to say, a big shout out and thanks to Mr. Brown, who's been very patient with me as we've been navigating the Gold Star project. I will tell you that we have all our lighting and we have our flag poles ready to go. And we are like just nipping at the edges of doing a lot of really good work in the next few weeks to actually get that plaza over at PFC Ryan J Hill Park ready to go to put that monument in. We're kind of fingers crossed targeting first part, first part to middle part of January for that to be complete. And, yeah, really thankful for that and lots of, lots of, you know, lots of work going on there. Let's see, there was one other thing that I thought about, but drawn a blank on it. What? What, you got somewhere to go? All right, well, hey, I just want to say, Commissioner Scruggs, again, thanks for being here. Glad to have you here. Thank you for being here. It's awesome to, to have your participation. And I want to encourage you, as you kind of listen to our meetings and stuff, if you have questions, feel free to ask, right? Unfortunately, you don't get a vote on here, but I would certainly encourage you to, to think about this because frankly, the things that we're doing now are going to impact you in the future of, of the city here. And so if you're like, hey, guys, no, no, I've got silver in your beards, you need to listen to me a minute, please be willing to, to bring those things up and, and, and express some ideas or, or ask questions. I mean, that's, that's a good opportunity for you, so. All right, any other witty statements, remarks, comments? Marine Corps is two hundred and fifty years old. Go Devil Dogs. And I just got to state for the record, I didn't see this until now, but Commissioner Hostler sent me a message during the public hearing. It didn't, nothing overly substantive, but I just saw it, so I just wanted to note that.
Thank you. If, if it has anything to do with the business of the city, just make sure and retain it.
Okay, sounds good. I will forward it to you. For what, to adjourn? No, are you telling me to get done and shut me?
You could allude to that, yeah.
Okay, all right. Hey, we are adjourned at seven twenty-four.
You're already on news antics, I see.